Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order and we'll call the roll. And I'll just start right to left. Alderman Baggett.
President.
Vice Mayor Brown.
President.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Potts.
President.
Alderman Caesar.
Here.
Alderman Barnhill.
President.
Alderman Peterson. And say Alderman Berger is not here. And so everybody else is good. So are there any citizens that want to make comments as we start this meeting? Seeing none, I'll go to item number one, which is Franklin's strategic plan.
Eric?
Hey. I'll just do a very quick kickoff. Good evening. Thanks so much for being here. This is, I guess, installment number three in our work on strategic plan work sessions. And so we're going to follow up and Cory's going to take you through some of the feedback that's been gathered through both the survey we did earlier in the year. She also did some focus group work. So that's going to be shared with you. I did share out to you all over the weekend, some information staff's been working on in terms of the context and framing around growth and what we have seen and where, how we are working it. Got to share some of that perspective this morning at Frank Talks with Franklin tomorrow. So that is an ongoing effort. And the white paper that you received in particular is a working draft. But our intent is to convert that into a webpage that has some interactive components to it, Q and A, that kind of thing. So the content will feed that, but we'd love your feedback on what you see there, how we're framing those issues or the data we're providing. You also saw some really good information that was shared with you last Tuesday and some of the information we shared with with the public today at Frank Talks was a little more around process and the things that are in place to ensure that we we align with land use plan and development standards and building code and those kinds of things. So it's all part of the broader context of putting that in the context of how we work as a community and how we're growing and managing growth and consistently managing growth over a long period of time. So I just ask for any feedback you have on that, but that's the plan with that. I didn't, I don't want you to feel like you had to review all that for tonight. It may be helpful, but really for the 29th and 30th, when we have those sessions, I would absolutely say try to make sure you've gotten through that. And if you have feedback for us, if there's gaps in information or things you've heard in other contexts that you think would be helpful added to that white paper or some of the other information we're putting it out, please let us know. We want to make sure it's as useful to the community as we can. Again, this process is so critically important because it helps chart both our future, but also provides a framework that we can think through the issues that come our way, things that we may not even anticipate today helps us process it and manage it, think about how to respond and how it takes us to the goals that you have for the community and that the community wants overall to be who we want to be. So I'll turn it over to Cory and she'll take you through that that data collection and the reflection we have from that and go from there. So take it away Cory.
Thank you. So nice to be back. We've got some unfamiliar faces to me. So I thought I would go ahead and just give you a very, very quick synopsis of kind of who I am and where I came from. Actually started my career as a 911 dispatcher. So I am a complete weirdo and that I love local government and I have been there from the front lines all the way up. When I went to grad school, my daughter was seven or eight at the time and she looked at me and she's like, what are you doing? Because the idea that anybody would willingly go to school if they didn't have to was just completely foreign to her. And I said, you know how when you go into the bathroom every day, brush your teeth, you turn on the faucet, the water comes out? She said, yeah. I said, I want to help make that happen. And that's really what we do here, right? That's what local government does. So that's why I'm here. That's why I do what I do. That's a little bit about me. I'm here tonight because I had an opportunity to interact with different people in different places in your community in a variety of different ways. So we went through, we did a community survey and we also did focus groups. What I'm going to say is, don't you worry, I'm going to give you all of this. So do not worry about if there's something that you can't see, if you want to dig into something a little bit more. I'm super transparent with data. That's really important. But what I did want to do is I wanted to give you guys a high level overview and particularly with the focus groups. So focus groups are important because it's important that those are anonymous because sometimes there may be things where people aren't, you know, comfortable necessarily attaching their name to something, but it's important information for us to have. But the downside of that means I was the only person in that room. So please, as we get to that part, I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have. I want to make sure that everybody leaves tonight feeling that they have a good understanding on the data that's collected. But like I said, you guys, everybody's going to get the PDF. I'm very transparent with information. Oh, yeah, you know. Here we go. Okay. So first thing is, how many responses do we get? 1,656 responses to the community survey. Who did we hear from? And I'm going to buzz through this very quickly. But 93% residents, 29% worked in Franklin, 11% were business owners, and then 8% owned property other than their home.
So that adds up to more than 100%.
It. You certainly can. Yep.
Super good at math.
Yeah, I love that. I love that. Yep. No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
This might be your best story.
Oops.
Let's help mine.
Don't show off.
Okay, I think this is the next one. What is your age? This is actually pretty consistent with what I see with surveys. We tend to get more interaction from people kind of towards the middle of that, tend to get less interaction from younger people and from older people. So this is pretty consistent with the survey data that I see. And oh, there we go. Living situation, 91% were homeowners, 8% renters, 1% said other, almost all the others live with family in some way. And we, I might have you, yeah, that may be better. So again, overwhelmingly, the people who took the survey indicated that they were, their background was that they were white. Note, 51 people skipped that question. Go ahead and go. 97% indicated that they were not of Hispanic, Latino, Latinx, or Spanish origin. Does a member of your household have a disability? 90% said no. That's actually a little surprising to me. Actually, this number is normally a little bit higher. So I was a little surprised by that. Next slide. Children 17 or under. Wow, you guys, a lot of people took the survey who've got kids. So that was really nice to see. Next slide, please. Age 65 or older, again, 25% yes, 75% no. Keep going. And then what ward do you live in? 12% lived in an area outside of Franklin, but other than that, you can see the way that that breaks down. When the people said that they lived in area outside of Franklin. They were still in the area. I wasn't having people who were saying they were from like North Dakota or anything, but they were just outside of the city limits. Next slide. What do you like best about living in Franklin? Slotted up to three. Once again, you will note, yes, it does add up to more than 100% because you could sign up for free. Select up to three. But again, things like peaceful community, location. Location's going to come up a lot, especially we get into some of the focus group stuff, schools, and that sense of community. Next slide. What do you like best about living in Franklin? I will go ahead and give you guys all of this actual, the responses on this. Word clouds are somewhat helpful. This one I thought was actually pretty helpful. And then a lot of the stuff that I heard were things like, you know, they appreciated the values of small community, the history of Franklin. Next slide, please. How important is it to your quality of life? Public safety, 95%. As you guys have seen from other surveys that you've done, that's always very high up there. Schools, again. Neighborhood appearance was very high on this as well. Land and hillside preservation and conservation, that was actually a custom question that we put in, and that was at 60%. Next slide. How much are the following to the, following to your quality of life? Sometimes it's important to look at not only what is most important, but also to kind of take it one step down, right? So again, public safety, pretty much 100%. No big surprise there. But I wanted to point out some of these. Park and rec areas, especially when we start adding them together, that really starts to go up there, as does housing type and quality, as things are important to the quality of life. Next slide, please. How satisfied are you with the quality of services? Very satisfied, over 40%. Public safety, quality of life, just in general, fire and emergency medical response, neighborhood appearance, park and rec, park facilities. Go ahead. And then it's always, of course, helpful to see what they aren't as satisfied with. And what some of the things that came up with were roads, multiple transportation options. And we're going to talk a lot about this when we get into the focus groups particularly. Next slide. So thinking about the future of Franklin, what are the three most important things for a strong and healthy community? And again, now we're talking about the future. Sense of safety and security, high quality schools, high quality services, plenty of green space. Sense of safety and security always at the top of the list, and that makes sense, right? If you're happy, if you feel secure with where you live, that's always going to impact the way that you look at your community. Next slide. And again, we've got, we're looking at the future and again, taking that one step down because we've got a few more things now that wind up coming up here. Ease of transportation and getting around. Now it's up to 87% if we're going down one more, both essential and then somewhat essential. Green space preservation as well. And again, those are two things that are going to come out as well once we get into the focus group results. Next slide. What are the most important things? I pulled this out, you've got two more decimal points on this because there is essentially no difference between the land and hillside preservation, conservation, and a good street and highway system, but it didn't look like that unless I took it out two more decimal points. And then what are the three most important things for a strong and healthy community? Because they had the option of going ahead and putting in a free response. And so again, housing has come up a lot. That will be, was a major focus topic of the focus groups as well. Affordable, you will see up there as well. Next slide. How important are each of these to the future? Again, no great surprises here, although I would note the good traffic flow is showing up here as something that is important to the future. Next slide. I think this may be a duplicate. Go ahead and go one more. And then how many people believe a high quality school district is an important factor? 72% strongly agree. City of Franklin has a good reputation, 63%. That's actually pretty high compared to a lot of what I see. So that's very good news. Providing a safe and healthy environment is the highest priority. 57% strongly agree. And the city of Franklin should invest in projects and programs that enhance the quality of life for all community members. 54% agree with that. Again, that's a little bit higher than a lot of times I see that that really they're looking at that for all community members, that they strongly agree with that. Next slide. Franklin is a good place to live for all ages. And again, this is strongly or somewhat agree, more than 70%. Franklin should invest in projects and programs that enhance the quality of life again for all community members. This is just that second one down. Again, very high, city of Franklin has a good reputation. These are much higher marks than what I'm, I normally see. And I'm going to go ahead and stop right here for a second. Any questions? I know I'm spitting data at you and I know you're going to want a chance to process kind of the numbers later, but is there any comments or any questions so far? Yeah.
Number two, and tell me what you think they want. They should invest in projects and programs that enhance the quality of life. It's up to us to balance what we have to spend with what we are able to provide. So what do you think they're looking for?
You know, what I thought was, was interesting, you know, with that was quality of life and all community members, right? Those are actually pretty, you know, you, some of these things you would think that they would be obvious, and yet this is higher than what I normally see. Do I have an answer specifically for why? I don't. But I will tell you that there is something unique about Franklin, that this is coming out higher than what I normally see. If you do the math in my, in my head, 85% are saying that that's something that they see as being strongly, you know, or somewhat agree with that. That that, that's what the city should invest in. Next slide. How do you prefer to get your information from Franklin? 66% like social media. You guys are big social media people around here. Text messages are also very high, but I want to point out mailing such as postcards and letters are up there very much too. And that's kind of that tension that we're kind of seeing right now between communication. One of the things that is coming, just kind of going out right now, when we're talking about local government, it used to be that every day, people got the newspaper and you looked and you knew exactly what was going on and there was only one outbound channel. And one of the challenges right now is there are so many outbound channels and there's so much information that it can be really hard for people to kind of manage that. And I think you kind of see that here. There's different ways that information's being distributed.
We slap the news code for them now.
Yes. Yeah. There's, there's a lot of different ways for it to get out. Next slide. Oh goodness, and I, I believe that this was, so this was the last question, which was basically anything else that you would like to add for the strategic planning purposes? Some, it was almost a third of the responses, they wanted to add something else. So again, I'm going to go ahead. That was really, really high. So what that tells you is a couple of things. Just given the number, you've got a pretty engaged community. I was happy with the response rate on the survey, 1,600 and whatever responses, but even more so, they kind of wanted to add on to. There was a variety of different things there. There were people looking at it from different perspectives, wanting to make sure that their values and overall values were kind of across the spectrum. You know, were being preserved, making sure that it was a good place for families. But really, it was this great love of Franklin that was kind of coming true. But given that everyone took the time to do those individual responses, again, you've got all of those and then we'll pass those along to you as well, to at least take a quick look at. There wasn't, you know, a lot of necessarily, you know, as you can see, there wasn't any overwhelming themes that come out. And sometimes word clouds are as helpful for what you don't see as what you do. And in this case, we don't have other than the word Franklin, anything that comes out. We are sorted according to the number of times that we're inserted. Next slide, please. Any questions about that? And again, don't worry about the numbers. We'll give you guys all of that data, like key out, so you can take it tight a little bit. And anything else that you want. It's your, I selected it, but the data is important for your purposes. So. All right, I'm going to keep on going. And this is actually where I'd like to spend a little bit more time because we got to spend, I guess, spend time with Fordham Brews, which I think, I'll point out, where do you meet him here first? Where it's, let's go look at that meter first. So if you recall, I came in and I did breakfast with the mayors and Franklin tour, and we were able to go ahead and do kind of that thing live. So we got to hear from a lot of different people. And again, you can just kind of see the number of folks that survey every, pretty evenly distributed with people in that audience. We've been there less than 10 years to more than 30. Next slide. How important are these different things? Public safety, again, first place, almost always it's because if you feel safe where you live, that makes a big difference in how you've quality of like, I'm not going to lie, I was a little surprised at local stores and shopping. A lot of people were that fourth place that it may have just been because of the core answers they were given. And again, this was really to kind of help to launch the larger survey and kind of get everybody's feet wet in terms of getting this started. Next slide. You know, how important are the following things? Employment opportunities and services, both were very high on this. And well-kept residential community properties were a little lower, as was a variety of housing types. That is a little bit different than some of the other information that we saw, just that was in there, particularly the variety of housing types. But again, it could also be, we all, they gave them four options. Next slide, please. And then housing affordability. And I guess sometimes survey interest, data doesn't make sense when you put it next to each other. And I argue this is totally one of those times, because housing affordability, you have, that is first place for a lot of people and a good place to raise a family. Diverse set of shopping options, again, is coming in fourth. But again, they were, had to rank that in order. That was the way that my team has it set up. Is it necessarily always my favorite way to collect data for this reason? But it's interesting. Take a look down to the left. Next slide. And then priorities over the next one to three years. And I would say this is actually one of those times where this was a more useful words up. I think that some of the things that really came up, you know, choosing, again, traffic came up quite a bit, affordability, infrastructure, affordable. So again, still, I think all of my end question. Focus group results. Good to know. So I was here on March 18th to 20th, and I talked to businesses, nonprofits, high school students, and faith leaders. So the reason why I choose, I asked to speak to those word groups is because they interacted with the city in a very different way. Particularly the high school students, they're always an interesting group because they really are a teacher of the community and they have got some barriers. A lot of times they don't have driver's licenses yet. They're looking at things very differently. I also like to talk to nonprofits and faith leaders. When I was a manual dispatcher, what I used to say is, I knew the battered women's shelter was full before the city manager did, and the nonprofit saw it coming once before I did. So they can be a very good vote timer of what kinds of challenges are up and coming. So I was happy to be able to talk to them and the same things because a lot of times they can let us know what some of the upstaged challenges to say be. Next slide, please. So this is just some information. Again, you'll get all of this. So I'll let you go ahead and read through it. But basically, it's a small group discussion. And so we got to hear about thoughts and opinions, and they ran for about nine minutes. Next slide. And so some of this stuff is thematic. Because the four groups were so different, I did organize them by groups that you will see there's some common themes that come through this. All participants were told that the information would be anonymous. But if there was something that they said that I thought I might use in my report that might identify them, I would ask their permission. So the reason why I do that is because once people know that there's kind of a procedure through which you'll go ahead and ask, you'll identify them if needed, they're very happy to, they feel freer to share information. So the focus groups were ident, were anonymous. Next slide. So these were the focus group questions. I did not ask all of them in order. Sometimes we wound up answering some of the questions as we were going through. So there really wasn't a need to. Sometimes there were time strays. Everybody has some really great conversation going on around one question, and so we kind of hopped over something else. But those are kind of the questions that we went through. The exception is the last question. The last question is something that I asked of every focus group, and you're going to see why when we get there. One of the challenges of focus group data is that it's qualitative, right? And so it can be really hard to organize. That last question gives me a way to organize it in a way that is quantitative, that allows us to measure it in a way and see what's the one. Next slide. So again, you're going to have all of this, but the business group really talked about, you know, what it is to be able to bring the people to Franklin, be able to have businesses come, that it is, it is really pretty easy in a lot of ways for them to be able to bring people here and have people fall in love with Franklin. Downtown Franklin is great, quality of life is wonderful. And it's important, one of the things they point out is important to preserve the essence of what makes Franklin Franklin. Next slide. Justice is done. Great job managing growth according to this group. They're in that balance that's needed, they said. And they said, success begets success in Franklin. Companies do well, some are willing to cuff. But they did want to play it out, and this was a pretty interesting part of the conversation. Perception matters when CEOs are deciding where to relocate their companies. And so the more that can be done to make sure that negative headlines are minimized and that people can feel confident that their employees go deal welcome here, that is helpful. This is one of those times where the fact that it was anonymous, I think they were willing to be a little bit more candid. Next slide. Franklin's limited public transportation is a trend, is challenged, and this was one of the things that came up. They also were a little concerned about traffic as Franklin continued.
We should have brought it.
Next slide. Housing. This is not the last time you're going to talk about slot housing, but it is the first. They, this, there was another big conversation about housing because they were talking about, so when I talk about housing, by and large, I am just very much there that gather data. But sometimes it's important to understand what they mean when they say things, people saying more housing. And so that's one of those places where I push back and I ask, what kind of housing do you want? Are you looking for affordable housing, where, you know, people can get it kind of at a variety of different levels? Do you want workforce housing, where people who are working in Franklin can also afford to live here? Maybe senior housing, where housing is more like the one's level, maybe handicapped accessible? Or maybe things like the light stage housing, right, where somebody could live in Franklin throughout them courses that they're like. So that's one of those times where I really do try to help them to define exactly what kind of housing they want. I'm hoping you're not surprised here. They really are looking for workforce housing, not just in certain areas, but throughout the city. And they really wanted, they said it's a welcoming community, but there's really no place for sometimes both of them. They were talking about the city can get the community by incentivizing some sort of affordable housing, maybe development, thank you workforce and mental management housing too. That also came up as a pain point was mental management housing as well. And then there was also concern about small business owners being squeezed out of Franklin. So I'm going to pause here for a second. Is there any question about that? Because there was a lot of time spent on the public, the transportation and the housing card of this. I think we will continue talking about this. So was there any question specifically about the business perspective?
No, that surprises me at all.
I didn't think it probably.
I think that's what your silence is.
That's all, guys. Keep on going. A zoning code enforcement. They did say that sometimes there were seemingly contradictory zoning codes and ordinances as well as incentives and enforcement of codes. And I will say this is something that is pretty common because of, there's in most cities, there's just, there's a lot of holes. And I would anticipate that Franklin probably has a fair amount as well. And so a lot of times it's just not understanding all of the things that are needed and suddenly feeling surprised by something. So this is something that comes up pretty often with me when I'm talking to businesses is just challenges with codes. We talked for a long time about the zoning, the historic zoning different districts. And then it's difficult to get proposals, the historic district in particular, being difficult to get things done. And they, what happened, they have to go in front of zoning board. And that sometimes it seems like there's a sort of that arbitrary that necessarily drive.
When you say, you say zoning board, referring to historic zoning board, the planning commission, or because we are, we decide on zoning, what's the?
So the, the second bullet point was specifically about the historic district. That third one was more, it seemed to be more about zoning in general. So if you guys have got a plan commission board or something like that. So one of the, one of the good things about having somebody who can like, like me outside is, I have no force in this race. I'm completely unbiased. The bad news is, I sometimes don't know the intricacies of process.
Yeah, that's good.
But I, that seemed to be the more in general. And then considerable letake makes it difficult for small businesses to navigate the system. And again, that was another one of those discussion points is particularly for small businesses with limited capacities, that sometimes it seems, they seem difficult to be. Next slide. City services, firemen, police are doing a great job, trash recycling are handled above. City services, firemen, police are doing a great job, trash recycling are handled well with a safety issue. Cities prepared to take care of it. There does, there seem to be again, some concern about a little bit of a disconnect between, we're talking about things like autoconsec and things like that between fire planning and engineering. Again, this is pretty common. But because there can be some differences between those codes. And maybe just aligning those better with better collaboration or some sort of communication was what the suggestion was. But overall, they said events are well watched, permanent safe and clean. And by Monday, you wouldn't even know anything had happened. Which is finalized as a present and not the way that it goes in most.
When did you do these sessions?
Exactly.
When did you do this session?
This is my phone checking. That fourth bullet was a pretty big topic, which I think we've resolved a lot of that, by the way, but that worded into. That was a, yeah, that was a pretty big topics and it coincides around that same timeframe. So.
That's right. I can see that one.
Okay, okay.
Mechanic.
Now on to the nonprofit growth. You know, they observed that Franklin is a very different city than it was twenty years ago. There's, you know, they, they perceive it and I do want to point out here, one of the things about focus groups is it's about perception. That's an important data point, but the data points are perception. But that is the way that people see things and that's important. Right? So the way that they're, the nonprofit was kind of seeing things is there's a lot of people coming in from different perspectives, different backgrounds now choosing to live here. But they also said their residents are philanthropic and when a need is presented, they respond generously. Franklin should continue to celebrate cultures. And one of the big things that baked up into the conversation was, I'm including space to nonprofits. Nonprofits really feel like they are an important way that the gap is fulfilled in Franklin. And yet they are recently squeezed out because of rising rents. And they also noted that Franklin needs a place where the owner residents as well as senior citizens are able to engage. They're really seem to be a lot key to that nose section, but on the hands, there just seems to be less services available. Activity, I should say. Housing, told you guys, we're keep on talking about this and I didn't lie. Again, that, and I, again, I really was digging down into that and it's, it's affordable workforce, affordable rents, all of those types of housing. There's concerns about carry downs of what would be looked at as affordable housing, a three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar home and putting up something as much larger. And that that's having a trickle down effect. Working people can't afford to live in Franklin state and there was some real concern about quality of light. Particularly when we're thinking about people who are coming in and supporting Franklin. And whether or not those long term units are actually having adverse impacts on their and what that does then to them as people, but also to just Franklin as a whole. We had some interesting conversations in the high school group because they're talking about how to stick their chain dock distances. And what does that do to the teachers that they're having to near the hour rates, right? Small business owners being squeezed out to the height rest. They were talking about homelessness being on the rise, people living up cars. And then this was another one that came up at Camden and nonprofit group. And also specifically, actually I believe it was in the high school group and in the faith leaders. Generation stories being broken. They have people who've been in Franklin for multiple generations and they're no longer able to stay here. The high causing health prohibit people from living where their families been for generations. And there's a lot of people who are really looking at that as a tragedy for the community. That you're not able to hold on to somebody's historic. Next slide. Transportation. This was another one that came up around public transportation and that actually was another theme that came up through all of the groups. Because it really is car dependent and yet there's so much traffic. And so if you don't have a car, how is it that you're able to get around? They were talking about even expanding, maybe. But that increased traffic is concern and even more bike lanes to be able to take some of the pressure off of being some. Next slide. Communications, the focus group, what they want to talk, they want, they want, they want to make networks and collaborate and build teams and figure out how to do all of it. And so that's something that they really want to do on a regular basis. One of the things that they talked about at length was it would be helpful just the city and not necessarily the city as an organization, but the city as a community. To be able to better help people when they are in crisis, network and channel solutions. Because right now people can kind of get lost. And we see that necessarily that the city is the solution to that, but that city can be an important curtain, a facilitator. And then, you know, again, helping to direct families to the services that they need. There is real concern about families in crisis in this community. And not that the city can solve the problem, but the city is an important person to help facilitate some of the social chats. Any questions about that? She bond out and then high school group, I love the high school. So sometimes I will have. Sometimes I have people asking why I do the high school group. And they will actually tell me that they are, they only think that they're going to have that much to say. And I will tell you something, it's hard to get the talking, but the way once you do the things that they say and they're self receptive and they really do look at the community in through their own perspective. But they also mirror a lot of the things that the adults are saying. They just, and they sum it up in a very different way. So they said, you know, Franklin has everything you want, always in a short drive. That, that people help and support each other and they really spill that as young adults. The small town feeling character is important, but they see that tension, right? With population growth. Making the community better without focusing on money. That was actually an interesting conversation that we had because that's a real tension for the kids in the high school. You know, what if you're not going Europe on vacation? You know, there's kind of that tension at that, that area. Is there still a place in Franklin for everybody? That's kind of goes into that cozy conversation as well. What is Franklin becoming? Is it still a place for everyone? My very favorite line that came out of any high school focus group, I think probably ever came out of this one. And the young woman said, it's not just we want to make people feel welcome. We want to make them feel wanted. We want them to know that we want them to be here. Making them feel welcome feels very passive. And we want to actively let people know we want them to think here. That's just being this very active embracing of people and they stated it. And that the other thing that says that Franklin should have more mentor marketed to other groups, not just families because the the nearest brother. Growth, they'd like to see a place for youths to hang out. They want to see ages, places for all ages to meet engaged activities and expensive fun activities. Open space. That was a huge conversation with the high school. They are very concerned about preservation of land. They are very concerned about the way that they see the landscape changing. They want activities to bring the community together and they want to make sure that there's more places for walking and biking to enjoy. One of the misconceptions I also see is that teenagers care about themselves and I'll tell you that never comes through in film screens. They really care about the community and making it a great place for everybody. And they especially dominate his right light. And they also want Franklin more renewable, the rate of future, solar panels, a solar farm. They want to make sure that Franklin is here for today and the future. Next slide. Housing. And it was funny because they actually tied building affordable housing to making people feel wanted. That if you have affordable housing, that that's part of what helps people feel like they have a place. And it was, again, they were talking about enabling families who have lived in Franklin for donations to stay here. One quarter of the focus groups tended with back to Franklin, which I gotta say normally I don't see everybody like, I'm out of here. And you ask them where they're going and they're always like California, Sun Coast. So a lot of times they'll tell you that the cost of living is cheaper and you're like, really? So it was a little surprising that order of them that's in the back of Franklin. And I would say that says a lot. They want more variability at housing. Again, that open space. Again, one of these things that they are very interested in the look. New houses don't have the historic look. They don't like it. They want it to look consistent. So they want to make sure that when developments are being done, if it's in a place that already has got a certain look, that that kind of character is maintained. And high density housing feels crowded and urban and they really want to see that conservative yearness. Any questions about any of this? Keep on going.
Aggressive statements.
Increase in check, traffic is seen as a challenge. You got a lot of just natural. I think because it exists and so people are like, oh, if we could just do more with that. But they also note that public transportation is a way for parents to feel safe, going their kids a better way to get around. That's a challenge for that age group, especially if they don't have driver's licenses for them, being really that licensed drivers. Their parents will let them go as far. And then also building barriers between bike lanes and traffic, particularly for those young adults. They said that sometimes that can be a little bit scary riding a bike around and they, they wish they felt safer. Next slide. Always interesting to hear what young adults think of the place. And here they've got a good response time and they're very understanding is what they said. They raised with the fire department, they, they'll listen to clearly by interacting with children. So that came through as well. Public safety is important. There is however, they're also aware of just kind of the world that we live in, right? And so they did say that sometimes we are bringing in a lot of people from outside for festivals. And they wish that there was a more visible police presence because they do worry about safety with large towns. They love the city landscaping. Again, this whole thing of how do you get around that Franklin's be more pedestrian friendly. Again, there is some bike trails, walking trails as well as more trails and the turf and making trails more sensible. And then slide. Eight questions about the high schoolers before I jump in. So all right, I'm gonna keep on going then. Again, a lot of things that are similarities, right? That we've got a very engaged community, lots of people with collective viewpoints and backgrounds who have relocated to Franklin. It's kind of become this fixture of people from a lot of different places. But the faith leaders also said that residents are generous and I mean part of something impactful. Again, this is another group that really thought that the bank communities could benefit from more community partnerships, focus groups. And that by the city working with businesses, churches and nonprofits, a bigger collective impact could make. That really kind of a lot of people are kind of individually working on issues and then really just start looking at it more holistically. Next slide.
For a quick, the city actually partners with a ton of nonprofits in the faith groups. It was a conversation about not knowing how to, or that there's no like organized process or system or like the city is honestly, except one of the things I think we do really, really well is work with like nonprofits and various things for a variety of issues. But was it more like process or was it just like they didn't feel like we were doing it?
So and I'm going to look at Brandy, who I know works with nonprofits and I'm also doing a look at here for input on this one. What I would, my impression was there's a lot of different nonprofits, but they're dealing specifically sometimes with some different things. And maybe being able to understand a little bit better. What services are available and be able to just coordinate that a little bit better. And again, I don't know what is in, it, I don't know what is in place right now. But just that some of the problems that are out there are have problems with easy solutions. And so the more coordination there is, you know, homelessness is not a housing issue, right? It's a, it's a multifaceted issue. And so the more people were able to jump in and say, we can help with this, oh, that group can help with that. The more we're able to provide the solutions and that maybe there may be still some gaps. That was my impression, Brandy.
Well, and I would, I would challenge you Patrick to say there are nonprofits, you do things that don't feel like they're part of the city. I think if you look at even our budget and the things that we give allocations to, it's very finite group. And a lot of those are what you would expect and what we need to participate in. But I think it, it gets frustrating when everybody tells their corner of the world is just as fighting as hard as everybody else and wanting to feel that support and having fortunes and what their mission is. Does that make sense?
And people who work with nonprofits are passionate. And they are about to invest lots of their fears in the stuff that they care about. And so I think that they want to do the most good that they can. Anything to?
Yeah, I, I think those are all, I went in the folks groups. I don't know exactly, but I, I see some of this. Cause we do have a pretty robust nonprofit sector in our town. Where is there overlap? Where there's turf? Where's there ways that we can work better? Where are there places we're seeing some of the same people, but maybe not connecting it? So I, that's kind of what I hear elements of and also differentiating where's the greatest need? And how do we put our focus on that?
Well, my definition of an nonprofit has always been they stand in the gap of what government cannot. And to me, I think that's why, and this doesn't exist, we, we do, but there, we are fortunate to have groups of people who see the need, create the five oh one C three to pick up that torch and fill that gap. So there's some things that I don't think we're ever going to be able to address and, you know, equally it's all stat work.
And we don't really have here a governmental role that's well defined in social services. Other places they do. Like where I came from, where I worked in the county, we did a lot of social service work directly, either directly as an entity or through direct relationships with nonprofits. We're less in that role as a city and our county is not, counties in Tennessee generally don't do it nearly as much of that as they may in other, other states, other regions. But I do, it's just different. Yeah.
I think all of us on this board is even in this room, we do our best to support.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I would also probably add that I think a lot of this is also probably reflective of our current times, right? Rents are rising. It is, interest rates are housing, the whole housing issue is becoming more and more problematic. And that's fashioning. That's not just a Franklin thing. But all of a sudden we need to put more of your income towards housing. There is less of your income to go towards other things. And it suddenly exposes gaps that may not necessarily be there, except for the fact that so much more of your income is now going to housing. So like stress in one area is kind of causing stress in other areas as well. And it, it may not be that it is, that there isn't an infrastructure built on, but maybe the problems are different. And so the, the gaps are being felt in a different way.
And I had, yeah, I just had a conversation today with somebody in the county. See, this is a pretty common conversation that people come and they're wanting to know what the gaps are and see it. And they're not necessarily asking the city to partner with them. They're wanting to know where they participate.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and again, there is a, they did understand that it was at the city's role to advance. But they knew this, this city could help, this still attained some of the conversations.
But I, but I do think one of our biggest challenges, we have a blessing, a ton of nonprofits. But good luck finding a list of them all. I have countless, anyone in the city of the back leadership Franklin has, just about every class has tried to tackle that issue. And we have had a solution for it. So I think part of the gap of people not knowing it was you just have so many of it, you, you don't know what we have a, we put a kiosk in to try to highlight them. We have room for forty eight of them. We got twelve to participate. So, you know, part of this is also having some way of people being able to go to a place and identify a need that they have to find that information.
And this actually came up in the nonprofit one kind of earlier where some kind of like a two one one where you could put, somebody could get in here and kind of know who access the other services that they need. Again, that kind of came up in two different places and I kind of don't know this, the kind of the specifics, but what you're saying makes sense. Can, is consistent with what I heard of terrorists. Yeah.
Bullet point number is to read you there, which says rest is tried after, oh, I thought. Coach, that's top, what were you, that's done, what updated?
Updated in some square. Feet was off turn out still. They tap decent.
So I would again tell you that there is that difference of times between perception and data points.
Come back.
The perception is. That people take interest in ownership in the city and I don't.
Yeah.
And I don't. The place.
But I don't think that's first part.
Yes.
Didn't particularly act.
But this survey is done right after lunch.
Yeah.
Highest.
Should be.
Yeah. For itself. Who's still what? Less than thirty percent.
Oh, yeah.
Right. No, and I would, you know, if we kind of look at local elections at general. And I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know, that those are not ones that are generally. You know, the generally we get a lot of engagement with. And again, that maybe this is kind of a slice and tined. But that's usually important though, because sometimes it kind of works to our advantage, right? We can kind of see some kinds coming. And other times it's it is reflective of the precise time we took it and that. Residents turn out to vote mainly based on the timing of when we did the. And thankfully they did come out to vote.
Back you think that since this be a much different meetings.
That is.
She was happy.
Any other questions about those?
I'll back Brad.
Yeah.
All right. Um. Once again, we're going to talk about housing, surprise, surprise, right? And again, it is specifically that workforce housing and that affordable housing. More of the few times I really asked people. I push a little bit. What do you mean by housing? And this is what they said. Again, that concern that people who were born and raised here can't afford to live here. In short term emergency housing, it was difficult, if not impossible to find is what I was told. And so if you look at people who are trying to leave abusive households and there is something happening where. The house itself becomes unsafe to live in, trying to find a short term emergency situation is nearly impossible. And they were also talking about the number of students who were experiencing homelessness. They were saying that it had gone from thirty to about a hundred students the last two years. Next slide. Transportation, again, you know, increased traffic is challenged downtown parking is a challenge. I heard a little bit about some handicap parking again. People who are unable to go further places and do they have the parking that they need? And then some questions about. And balls. It's a sex tie.
It's got some. I'm in the damn day. Part of state, right?
Zoning and code enforcement, and this very much pulls a lack of that historic district. Because my understanding is that some of the churches are located in historic. And again, sounds like there may have already been some stuff made with this. But then also the last bullet point that I would probably really put your attention to. Is the impact that's having on some long term residents while trying to bring things. Tried to do some reserve renovations. This focus groups felt that there were some long term residents who would be forced out because. When they were trying to do some repairs, they were having to bring some other things up. And it was causing great hardship and kind of going into that sort of housing issue again as well. Next slide. City services, again, Franklin always looks good, meet the clean, even the Monday after major festival. I never hear this anywhere. So that was really nice. Public safety being important. This group of the chicken that was talking about mental health and de-escalation of resulting police situations. And I just want to kind of clarify this for a bit. That the mental health is is causing officers to come into situations and are already volatile and now they are commencing de-escalate those situations. But that the city needs to offer support for people as they are responding to more and more people roaring crisis that. You need to make sure that we're for supporting our first year smokers. Native Hispanic churches are used to working with city government and really doing some outreach on top of that. Again, public safety, we get about this whole thing about, you know, working to have collective kind of. Times. And then, you know, trying to get different opinions and trying to figure out how we can hear the quietest voices. Because sometimes it takes a little bit more work, but since that is the loud voices are not reflective of. Everyone is a. Next slide. Any questions about whatever's left until so far? All right. So the challenge of focus groups is there is just a whole lot of conversation. There's a whole lot of data, which is great as part of the strength of all the scrubs. But then you have to in some way kind of organize it. So what I do is I actually ask people to do exactly what we're going to wind up doing about two weeks. I asked them to prioritize. And I don't let them do anything for the most part. It's a little sorry, but by and large, I don't let them choose anything that is not within the city's. For of purview, either directly or. Or I'll let them lead away with choices indirect. So for example, if they want to talk about schools, that is not in the city's. Right? So if you want. So I make them choose three things for Franklin to focus efforts and resources on over the next five years. And then I kind of bucket their responses. Top five responses are highlighted in yellow. Either about. We had more people in the folks groups. Some of them had to leave a little bit early. There was about thirty five people who had answered this. There was a couple of people, I think, who only gave two, so they couldn't think of it.
Is this all your focus groups?
All I thought the scripts combined. Yep. This is a way to kind of summarize their themes ago caused all of the space. Right? Hey, here we go. We're going to start right out with housing. For reason why there is that too. The fact of the housing is because some people just said housing. And I said, what kind of housing? He said, just housing. Okay, just housing. But again, I tried to push them a little bit more. What kind of housing do you want? Tangible workforce housing, affordable housing. That was nineteen people said one of those two things. Homelessness, limited teardown. So if there's not a number after it, it means what person said it. But this way, but anybody, everybody though, they got their three and I recorded all of their responses. Next slide. City services. Building clear codes are clear predictable, not burdensome, historic building challenges. This is that full tension, I think, sometimes between character versus preservation. How important is it to have that brick or to have a brick that looks similar to that brick, right? And so that was kind of what that was. Being business friendly, high standard for public safety. Yeah, I'm not going to read all of this. I'm just kind of trying to pull out some of the big ones. Coordinating meetings with cities and nonprofits and faith communities on a regular basis. Six people said that. Next slide. Public transportation. I think this actually wound up because we split housing into two. I think this motto being the second highest one. Non car options. So public transit specifically came up, but even things like bike lanes, but things for people to be able to get around that are non star options.
Did you put trails into that as well? If someone said trails, would that have there?
Uh, trails, I believe trails are, I believe, next. That was, I did do that separately. Yep. Planning for growth in traffic was six. Next slide. More biking, walking bike trails. There you go. And maintaining the commitment to open spaces and public parks. Again, that's one of those five, as long as those more biking and. Walking and bike trails. The small town feel vibe would see a downtown. Next slide.
Oh, wait, go back.
Of go back. Yep.
Incentivize developers giving land to nonprofits.
All right.
Interesting.
That was, that was one.
I wanted to say it out loud.
Make sure you don't miss that.
Sorry.
Oh, good. And then the Franklin community, again, listening to the quiet voices, not that it's allowed once highlighting different voices, including minority businesses. Being truly welcoming. More activities for a variety of income levels and ages. Increased by need to support red assistance for nonprofits. That the the office are very concerned with the way that the rents keep going, whether or not they're going to continue to be able to do their mission, at least in Franklin, or if they're going to have to go sell themselves. I thought that one of the, one of the things that came up was very interesting was. We know our taxes are low. We know our taxes are low. And we do understand that at some point they're going to have to go off because we can't keep on doing everything that we're supposed to. Now, I would note that it was one person out of thirty five. But it was not something in the focus group that people necessarily pushed back on. There is, there is acknowledgement that. Taxes are low. And that it. It is, there is a high level of service in spite of that. And that's all I got. Do we have any questions? All right. So we're going to. Oh, I said power. We nailed it. All right. I love that. What I would like to do then, shoot, could we maybe just take like five minutes, let people get up and stretch? Cause I didn't spit and data achieve for a while. And then come back and we're going to start on mission warp. We're not going to finish tonight. I'd like to at least start on mission warp. So come back maybe a ton after six. Is that okay?
Yep. So power, whatever that time is.
All right, next slide, please.
Ten. Watch it.
Mission, vision, values. Some of this is going to look familiar. Next slide, please. All right, this is my airplane rather than not at my airplane, but grab make with the one I use a lot. Um. This was put together by a good KU grad that I think is one of the best ways to really illustrate kind of this overlapping between staff and the board. So the board is is right here right now. They're like zoning out because they've seen it at this point, I think, two or three times. But so the benefit of everyone who's not seen it before. Really, when we look at this, it is anything that is green, if you're looking at this bar, council responsibility and white stat. What you will notice is. At fifty thousand feet foot level, that really is norm, that vision, that purpose, that really is about the board, that really is primarily what they are here to do, do things like. Put policies in place, help us figure out where we'll stop. That's why when I came here before, we worked through things like values and vision, I came in and I was working with the board. Now, when we're doing strategic planning, we're going to be working our way through this all the way down to the other end here, which is the runway, that day to day work. If you look at that, that really is where the staff is solely is, I shouldn't say solely, but mostly responsible for it is that the day to day execution. All of those policy things, those vision things, all the rest of it, that's where all of those things get carried out. And in the middle, there's some shared responsibility. Guess where mission is? Smat down in the middle. So tonight we're going to go through, we're going to start working on mission. We're not going to finish. We're about five minutes in two weeks, but we're at least going to start that conversation. Next slide, please. So these were the values that were decided on. When I was here and whenever it was. So culture of excellence, we leave integrity, wisdom and our results focus. Collaborative, we're inviting, approachable and engage with our community and each other. Service driven, we are adaptable, responsive and capable focus. Hurt, we feel joy in the work while caring and respecting our team and community. And purposeful, we are pragmatic and future focused. Our approach to solving problems. Next slide. So what is the difference between vision and mission? Vision is about where we're going, future focused, and it's pretty genuine. Right? Vision really kind of looking ten years out is is really what we're looking for vision. Mission, it's what we exist to be. So it's current focus and very specific. Next slide. Vision statement. Everybody's very proud. We got it down to, I think, ten words. So America's finest hometown driven by excellence, now balancing preservation and progress. Next slide, please. And again, that was worked on with the board of Mayor Nolan because that's going to run the left side of that graphic. That's that vision. Now we're here to talk about mission, mission. That we're here to do, what we exist, why we're here, what we exist to do, what we seek to achieve. So it does a couple of things. It's a concise explanation of why we're here, what we do. It's our purpose overall attention, but it also communicates purpose and direction. Internally to employees. And externally to rest, businesses and other stakeholders. Next slide. Mission statements of some recognizable companies, and I'm not going to read through all of these, but some of these are kind of fun. Google to organize the world's information and make it universally accessible and useful. I'd say that pretty well summed up what they do. LinkedIn to connect the world's professionals to make them more productive and successful.
Sort of agents.
The Red Cross to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. By mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. You know, who's doing it? You know what they're doing. Next slide. That's your mission statement. We have a title. We got a little work. Still there's a product. We got a little work. What it sounds like is that there are certain departments that have mission statements. But there isn't necessarily a city of Franklin mission station. So we're going to go ahead and start working. Next slide. These are some ones from public safety. So mission statements are, you know, again, they tend to be about why they exist. They aren't necessarily quite as inspiring as the commission statement. Those tend to be more like. That's where we're going and that's what we're going to do. They tend to be a little more pregnant. But I have faith that you guys are going to accomplish something really good by the end of this, because the whole visions thing was fun to me. Yes. Next slide. So we are going to do more posted notes because that's everybody's favorite activity, but today everybody gets to play. So we are going to, Angie is going to help you by casting out. Postits to everyone.
Have a portion pill.
I'm Tom. Oh, sorry. Well, yeah, one had Angie a pad. We give them a pad. Yeah, yeah. Yep. Nope. One pad is fine. Just want to make sure it wasn't any close to. We're no correct. Yes, Sam. We just got it.
Let's see.
Jacob, boy. Is this submitted? All added us to be.
Cars.
Leave me a panel here. This is.
Yeah, you just go. Such a little water. You know, I don't overthink it. Wait, and I'll touch it.
Yeah, yeah. See, I've got one for you.
Oh. Right, close. Sure. Thanks. Doctor, pardon, spoke to us. John, Danny, Aprils, actually, I think. The cheap little people jockey. But yeah, so I'm a fun it. There is a humorous practice, so to many I'm later. Which I don't season. So, but when we talked about. That's the. Then comes to get a pretty good, I don't know, she pressed the person, she's been a lot further than instead of. But I have this, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was. Oh, I thought you. And that's the only thing that's still is that you got time.
So the first question is, why do we exist? And we're talking about the city of Franklin as the organization. Why does this organization exist? What's the purpose? So these should all be on these three questions should all be on separate post it now. So if they're not, please put some on separate post it now. But question three. What would happen if we stopped doing it? Ready to be a favor? There are three posting those up there. Question one on that one. Question two, put your post it there. Question three, over here.
Seven, seven, seven.
So here's what I want us to do.
Is. How plus.
I want us to.
See if that right. It matters.
Death. Uh, it's not. Okay, question one, why we exist?
Kimar. Okay, so we have a few main themes that will they can you ask for them? One was a service to the citizens. Okay, Jeff was speaking. And one line. The other one is really taller twice. Also, the transition. And the other one was. So puddles, crap, virus. Our risk, the pro. And I'm like, you're, that might be it right there. I did not write that one.
So service to sentences, quality of life, are there, was there any specific? Interesting. Takes on that.
I think it's against the quality of life. I think some of its things to kind of lay a foundation for this way to reach the able to thrive to. Like this best. But it's. And services to many of these is what. Sorry, different topics, but. And, um, the services to many of these, this, what, sorry, different topics, but this given generally others, this cycle sometime. What's the last line of that hate well on the second grabs? This is up that key. Take care of our residents provided high quality servicing is in the preservest power, sense of clears. And that big sense of. Tackle and deserve worse. Sense of community, yeah.
Okay, so question one, why do we exist? Do we feel like this adequately answers that? All right, you are now officially on the hot seat, my friend. Nicely done. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, everyone. Anytime we put somebody on the hot seat, they get a hand when they're not.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Question number two. What's unique about the way that we do it? So ours are for, and for Cambry, these two about the, which about me has, um, his first, I'm worried to come about high quality. Service of excellent stuff provide, um, anxiety, expectation. He's bouncing efficiency with how he's doing especially. In this, these all were, um, represent how balance, land progress, team, but preservation, so making your history, but to see you before. I'm sorry, I missed that. You're, I, I, I write fast, you talk faster. And that's, what was the last word? The, the second one is for balancing preservation, progress, maybe are the storage arm, but the. It's like you read that vision thing.
I have something.
Yeah, but. Uh, and these two, so this was kind of based that part of cowardly, who dedicated a goal, um, provide quality, that being selfless are one of. And then sort of related is, is, um, they are sponsored, they have a teamwork to collaboration. Considering to trust. These, they have raised, hit, dot, dot.
About.
Can we do is a, I have dedicated thoughtful community, considerate, first opinions. What else is in this? Uh, to do staring, teenagers. Between. Labors is, a song is. And, and thought way. Got it. Excellent. Anything else? Okay, so what I got out of that question two, then, what's unique about the way that we do it? Is high quality services balancing that quality and that efficiency, uh, balancing preservation and progress and then a kind of qualities in, in the way that we do it, right? Dedicated, thoughtful, committed to the community. Um, concerning diverse opinions, transparent teamwork, responsiveness. Is there anything that anybody feels like is important that I missed in writing the stat? All right, go ahead and give her a hand, please. Question three. What would happen if we stopped doing it?
All right, so the responses were categorized into three different sections, if you will. The first is chaos.
Chaos.
It's pretty good work. And there's, I know, a lot of inner grieving threads here. The second is loss of self. And that was by own words, so we can certainly work that a little bit more, but effectively including losing that heart, if you will, or loss of self for loss of heart. And then the third category is things, I don't know that I would write that down because it was specific items. Okay, that would happen, what specific thing was it to happen? The canyon would become trashy, pride would come in, there would be rampant development. Um, chaos is probably encapsulated in all of roads, and so I would almost argue that we only need winds for this one, and that's trials of the chaos.
Okay. Okay.
That probably doesn't look at an official statement. We avoid chaos. We prevent chaos. Saying I'm a different.
Super good, yeah. I like to think, I'd like to talk about this though for a second, because I think a lot of times this gets lost, right? We get caught up in the. Is there red tape here? Is it difficult to do that? Is it, you know, and that isn't, did it take, you know, forty five seconds for somebody to respond or fifty four seconds to withstand? But that really is about what the mission goes, what this collective body, both staff and the board. Is here to do is to prevent what we're kind of talking about here, this question three. Other than just like general chaos and the breakdown of society as we know it, loss of, I, I like this, this whole thing about losing our heart. That's an interesting comment. You guys have, are very. So we used to be tied to this place in a lot of, you know, variety of ways. Um, and there's a lot of worth it things to maintain that. And my guess is that that's what I'm hearing is that's kind of what came through is that. Dedication, dedication.
Yeah, I think maybe a wider way, it's like we fall off the best of lists. Um, and as light as that, and like hard as that may have, but I think there's something that, an element of pride for us to achieve those best of lists, whether they're global or. People suggest her. I had. It probably.
And it's not just, and it's not a quality, it's not a, an award that you guys have given yourself. It's, it's, you know, it's being mentioned by other people. You guys are, you guys are top of a whole lot of lists for a whole lot of very good reasons. Um, and that is something that is definitely unique about Franklin. Anything that we missed on choose three? All right, you poured right over their hand.
This was happy beginning.
So what I don't want to do tonight is word smith this. It is six forty five. What I wanted to do though was to just to kind of get the thought process going. Because really what a mission statement is, is about what are we here to do? What makes Franklin, Tennessee different from the place? So with that, what I would like to do is I would like to put a pin on this for about two weeks. Is that the process started? I think we've got some good ideas. I think we'll be able to get this summed up for these quick plate. But it was time to be go. And more importantly, everybody against fifteen minutes of their life back. So yeah.
Yes, one did the rules every night. We have a motion.
And with that.
Rag is. My man does. Yeah, just say process one. I know you're gonna send this, the deck after you did this bit earlier. Yep. Will you at least send Falcon to the mic of all of this?
I'm absolutely.
Yeah, we do. Over the next two weeks, we can be thinking about it. You don't have to process it, just send it.
I am happy to do it. And actually, and that's exactly why I want to give you guys a chance to think about and process that. Having up to you of this whole week of that you got. And if you could pull through the last couple of slides for me, because there were some that subs that I wanted to do real quick. Here we go. So clean, 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 rich, sweet, is not on your calendars. Please put it on your calendars. I will be back. SWAT survey will be emailed to everyone this Wednesday. A hundred percent participation is taken. So what is a SWAT survey? Any stray, leaks, up to these threats? I will be taking that information. I will be separating it out by elected officials and staff because it means there are some different perspectives, but that is really going to, uh, form the foundation of our retreat. It's really important that everybody participates. Is all of you have got your unique view on the organization. So a hundred percent participation, I will add your due until you do. Full disclosure there. Surveys are going to be due by the side, Thursday, July twenty fifth. You've got a hair over a week. Mission statement will come back by July twenty ninth. And with that, would somebody like to close our public meeting?
I've moved to a chat. Oh, favor, will you?